All right. This is the December 2nd, 2025, meeting of the Town of Larwell Town Council. We're meeting in special session tonight because we had some illness last month and weren't able to get all of the business taken care of, so we'll do that tonight and then have our regularly scheduled December meeting next week. Is that right?
Mm-hmm.
So we'll let the minutes show that all members are here, as is Renee Sills and Greg Hockemeyer. Did you all receive the minutes?
Yes.
And do we have a motion to suspend the rules to suspend the reading of the minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Second it?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pro pose same sign, motion carries. Do we have a motion on the minutes themselves?
A minute, a motion to approve the minutes?
A second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All in favor? Okay. Pose same sign, aye, that motion carries. First item of unfinished business, 105 West Main, Jessica and Tylin Hall lawsuit update on rubbish.
We have a hearing set for January 23rd at 9:00 a.m. and I've been working with Renee on that and she's going to monitor it, let me know if for some reason things get all taken care of by that date, and if not, we'll plan on going to court.
Okay. Any questions about that?
Yeah.
Second item is the 2575 grant for Hammond Tree Street. And we have an update on that.
Francisco Perez with Aben Marsh. Yes, so Bill Etzler out of the, from Aben Marsh, sent Renee a revised scope and revised agreement for amendment to the contract for the design of the Hammond Tree project. This amendment is for the overall cost of the design for the issues that were found during construction and then also found during the video inspection of the pipe and trying to clear the blockage. So, and then also additional cost for the construction inspection services. So, I guess just quickly running through like the various tasks that we had in the contract. So task one, we needed to get additional survey for when we redesigned the storm network to carry that new pipe across State Road 5 and then next to that existing manhole that was west of State Road 5. So we needed some additional survey for that portion of the, that redesign option. And then task two, design engineering, that's just trying to highlight the design changes that we had to make to, based off those unknowns and what we found, how that one structure had the pipe that looked like it was heading to the south, but then did a 93 turn and went straight down into the existing, what we believe was the existing combined sewer at one time. So that, so with the design engineering cost, that was trying to, the first time of redesigning, of trying to carry the storm network all the way across State Road 5. And then after doing that, learning from the contractor that the, that would potentially cause the construction cost to go over the allotted grant amount. So then we redesigned it to try to lower the construction cost again to stay under that allotted grant amount. Test three permitting, that's, since State Road 5, in that maintained road, we had to get another NDOT permit and coordinate with NDOT for when we were originally going to have that pipe run across State Road 5 to the west. That's four, there was no change for that. Task four was the bid phase services, so that was just doing the advertisement for contractors and trying to solicit bids. Test five, the construction phase services. So I guess one of the items that came about during construction, in addition to the discovery of the intricate pipe network, was that NIBLOCK, you know, the, a portion of NIBLOCK was bought out by milestone contractors, so there was some time trying to coordinate with NIBLOCK on a new schedule and waiting for their staff to, I guess, figure out when construction could resume. And then also some of that construction phase services was having inspectors out when we had R and R visual out here and trying, doing the pipe televising and trying to get rid of that blockage. Which is, task six is the reimbursable expenses. So the invoice that we got from R and R visual when they were out here back in March was a total of $8,220. And we previously asked the town and got approval from the town for a contract amendment of $4,140. Do you cover the R and R visual? That was based on what they quoted with the, what their quote was for one day's worth of work, but they needed two days' worth of work, so that's where the $8,220 invoice came from. So with this scope amendment, we're just requesting the additional $4,080 to cover R and R visuals invoice.
Any questions from the board members? Renee, do you have anything?
On this, on this last page, the contract and amended and then the total, so. Aben Marsh is looking for an additional, how much funds are additional being requested?
So the additional funds would be. About $57,700. It, it would be the amendment amount. And then part of that $65,928 amount there, that $8,220, that's including the requested amount to cover the R and R visual invoice. So the total that we're, I guess, essentially requesting is the $65,928.
In addition to the $42,000 we've already paid, you guys?
Yes.
Forty, okay.
A quick question, I maybe missed it in the paperwork. Construction phase services were to be at the current hourly rate and the original contract was not to exceed $25,000. I didn't see any attachment or schedule as to what that rate was or a breakdown of the actual hours. Are those things that you have?
At this moment, I do not. But we can get those before the next council meeting.
It just, it's, it's, it's a little shocking that not only is that amount exceeded, but it's more than doubled. With no indication as to who was charging what and who spent time doing what.
Okay, yes.
That's all the questions I have.
So, Mr. Hockemeyer, I have not had a chance to review the contract. So I guess from a contractual standpoint, where does the town stand?
Well, there's, the, the attached detailed pages, in addition to the fact that the town doesn't have a signed copy executed by Aben Marsh. Or I don't, maybe we do, this, it's not here. It's got a fair amount of weasel language in it that allows for certain changes and adjustments. Clearly, the initial thing where they talked about reimbursables to be determined, so that, that's clearly is now determined. The hourly rate was clearly supposed to be under the $25,000, that's one of the reasons I focused on that specifically. Contract itself was executed, was it 18 months ago now at this point, something along those lines? So I understand there have been certain cost changes at that. I, it puts the town in a different, difficult position because part of me wants to say, hey, we already had an agreement and if these changes were coming up, couldn't we have found out as they were coming along? I know that the engineers have been here on and off, I'm not, and maybe, I wasn't paying enough attention if we were being given some shots across the bow or some warning that this was going to end up being, by my calculation, more than twice as much as we were, as, as was indicated. If we get in a dispute, there is mandatory mediation involved. It may be, as much as anything, a learning experience as to, as to the vendor's expertise or lack of expertise in estimating and providing services at the cost that they said they would. And so, right now, I could look it over more to give you a better opinion, but I think we probably are over a barrel to have to pay it ultimately, especially if we can have some additional documentation. But the lesson may be learned as to whether or not this is a, in the future. Does that make sense? And I don't mean any offense to you, but I just, when 18 months ago, we were told that this was going to cost in the neighborhood of five, $50,000 to $60,000 and it's, ends up being what, 100, 120? And I assume that there's no way to get additional funds from Community Crossing to cover any of this, right?
Well, and I know there were some unforeseen things that came up, and I understand that. I guess what, it's hard to, you know, place the amounts in comparison to each other from the original contract to the amendment. Because you almost want to say, well, was any of the work that was done the first time around reused at all? Or was it just completely, everything completely redone to come out with a price that's, as Greg said, more than double the initial contract?
If you could have some more information, it sounds like he could provide a little bit more information and some background on this. I'm going to advise, do we just get this today? Yeah, I'm going to advise that you table it, we've got another meeting coming up in three weeks. Or three weeks, next week. I don't know. We may not, it may not even have the information by next week, but I would say if we can be given some additional information and any kind of an accommodation that we could be given.
Yes.
That you could share some of the concerns that have been expressed here, it's, it would have been, it would be, which certainly show goodwill if Aben Marsh can maybe adjust some of these things or possibly even propose a payment schedule. I don't think there's any way that this could be done even on just this year's budget, is that correct? And so I also hate to have the town council agree to anything that they can't, that we add, that we can't afford in the current year without an understanding that that would be paid spaced out. And given the grace that Aben Marsh is requesting for unforeseen circumstances, hopefully some of that grace could be shared with the town too, because this is clearly unforeseen. Does that make sense?
Yes, yes, yes. And Bill has mentioned that over and over, first trying to get some more documentation for next weekend's, or not weekend, but next week's council meeting and then trying to work with the town for a lot about this requested change and we would like to keep working with the town, so I know we want to work through this together.
Yeah, very good. Anything else from that end of the table?
We know that you're not the per, that you're the tip of the spear, so I'm, okay?
I was the only one available.
Okay. And so I, I've been put in that position myself before, and so I, I understand, we're not taking this out on you.
No, no, I understand, yes.
Doesn't need, okay, thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion to table this? Say aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Item number three, list of unsafe buildings in Larwell. Anything new or past need to be discussed at this time? Next item, Norm and Marcy Ecto, unsafe building update.
You get that?
Oh. Letter from the Town of Larwell dated, well, it's in November 8th, there it is. Unsafe building update, November 13th, 2025 town meeting, Norm and Marcy, Town of Larwell Council requests updates of your progress on unsafe structure at the November Town Hall meeting. Town of Larwell Council is requesting your presence at the next town meeting on November 13th at 7:00 p.m. at Town Hall. If not, both members, at least one must attend. If any questions, contact Town Hall at the number above, signed, Town of Larwell Council. And then can you, you have a note here dated 11/12? If you could explain that.
Okay, so Norm was out of town when she called in on 11/12 and they're still working on it on the inside, it's not done. The section at the, at the north end of the, of the house that has, of the building that has the hole in it, they're going to tear that down in the spring. They're going to get more metal siding and put it on the outside and it's just, they're working as financially they can, so.
Okay. Any comments, questions on that?
No.
Update on the metal siding.
I will give him a call and find out something by next meeting. Under the weather, so I couldn't do anything, but I'm getting around now, so I'll be able to give him a call.
Remind us, what is the status?
We gave him a deposit and he said he would try to be here, you know, November. Well, obviously that's passed and now the snow's hit, so it's like I'll find out what his intention is as far as when he thinks he can get here, but it's going to get really frigid, so I'd rather he would wait until it warms up at least, because I don't know, steel, I don't think steel contracts as much as aluminum, so to think they can still do it in the wintertime, as long as it's not below zero like we've got coming up, so I'll find out by next week.
Okay. Report on the tornado siren upgrade.
So I did get the, the contract for that, the Richmond Township Fire Department is to maintain the tornado siren. Me and Kim Arnold and Chris from Commonwealth did walk around and talk to some people and requesting that they write letters. He was just asking them questions, you know, about how long they'd lived here, you know, you know, is safety a concern, you know, for them, for their families? And what, asked him if he, if he would write up a letter and they would read it and if they were agreed to it, then, then they would sign it. You know, basically everything that he was asking them, he was going to put into a letter form. We've gotten those back. Me and Kim have not made it around to the people that we went to, to have them sign the document yet, so, but I do know that they are working on the grant money to help pay for it, but the township is responsible for maintaining the tornado siren. And if the town can think about it, if they want to, if they want to help financially, and I don't, from what I gathered, I don't think that tornado siren will be here, it'll be down at the fire station. It will not be connected to this building any longer, it'll be down there. Which I had a concern about, because I'm like, well, how far can you hear the siren? Because not everybody lives on that side of town, everybody lives this side. So, but if they're going to maintain it and would make sense, it would be connected to the fire station, so. But yeah, so there's still more to come on that, so.
Okay. The judges for the Christmas light contest.
Elaine got two more representatives from Edna Troy, and so they'll be out the week of December the 15th to.
Judge.
Judge. Can't think of the word.
Been a long day.
Yes.
Very good. New business, machinery insurance quote.
Do you have to get out of here? Okay, all right. Okay, so as I told you guys a couple of months ago, that the Cincinnati Insurance Company was no longer going to cover the machinery, which is basically, they call it the boiler insurance, it's for the, the lift stations. So they gave me two options. They included them in with the workman's comp and the liability insurance. So one is a deductible, it's a $1,000 deductible, both of them are a $1,000 deductible, and then the one is, is a $300,000 coverage and the other one is a, it's a $100,000 coverage per site. So with what we spend yearly for the workman's comp and the liability, I took that in and got the estimate of how much the boiler is going to cost. So with the $300,000 coverage, it's going to be an additional $1,079 and with the $100,000 coverage, it'll be an additional $547. With the boiler insurance that we had through Cincinnati, we pay $297 a year, is what we pay. So it just sort of depends on what coverage you want. They're basically the same except for the coverage amount is 300,000 and this one, it's a thousand. And we'll have to make a decision tonight because the Cincinnati boiler ends on December the 7th, the insurance does, so I have to get something to them to get this, to pay until March, because the liability and the workman's comp is from, is until March of 2026. So I'll have to pay like a prorated amount to get it covered from December to March until the next one comes through. So, but it covers, it covers the, it covers the building, I mean, it covers the hardware and, and stuff, it's just general machinery, you know, it's not going to cover if somebody throws a wrench down in there, you know, or someone's working on it and does something like that, but it'll, you know, cover like vandalism and that, stuff like that, so, but yeah.
This is monthly or an annual?
It's annually, for the whole year. Yeah, because this one here, the.
Here.
Yes, you may.
Guess I could ask. Well, no, I saw you look, I was like, that's what I wanted to look at too. So it's basically twice as much or three times as much total coverage.
Yep. And knock on wood, we have never had a claim.
Well, no, that's, that's.
Just saying, but that's not.
And I was going to ask, but I couldn't remember a claim, so it's hard for you to estimate whether 100 or 300,000 would make more sense. We had a true problem. $100,000 might not go very far to, or replacing certain things.
Yeah.
And that includes the, the lift station, or, okay.
Yep.
That's, so that's for the, basically the utility.
It is or isn't for the lift station? It is.
It is.
Can we afford the 300,000? Because things have just gone up so much, like I say, I don't know if 100,000 is going to cover.
Yeah, that was my concern as well.
And this is an annual?
So this 22, this 2925.
Okay.
That is the annual of what it would be.
Oh.
But I was just taking it from what we spent last year with the workman's comp and the liability, because that's what these guys have. And then I added the machinery, which is 297.
It's the additional.
And that's the additional amount. So this is 1,079 and this is 547, additional money that we don't normally spend.
Good.
What do you guys think?
Well, I think you're right. I think the, that the price is going up and.
Yeah.
It wouldn't, I don't think it would take much to hit 100,000 if we had a real issue.
If we had a real issue, it could go more than 300.
I, yeah, exactly.
Labor and all the parts.
That would cover more than 100. Well, can we afford it, Renee? There's, in my opinion, you.
Now, if you had a choice.
You don't have a choice. Yeah. You don't have a choice, so, I mean, it'll all come, this, this, this here additional, it'll come out of sewage, because that's what it covers. The rest of it all comes out of, uh, general is where it comes from. So this is basically sewer money is where it comes from, so. And. 300? It'd probably be just fine.
Yeah, I think so.
So do we have a motion in a second?
Make a motion to accept the $300,000 insurance policy?
A second.
Okay. A motion in a second to accept the $200,000 policy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign, motion carries.
If I need, make my signature, do we need to give like authorization for me and Detroit to find, be able to find something?
It, it's always a good idea to include in part of that motion that either the clerk treasurer or the town council president would be authorized to execute any documents. Is that acceptable?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
We need to amend the vote.
That's probably not a bad idea.
Okay, well, we'll just do it this way. We have a motion in a second to amend the previous vote to include the authority for, you have a preference? Town president, town clerk to sign? Either way.
Either way.
Sign the documents necessary to
Get the insurance coverage.
Yeah. So that, that's what's on the table to amend that vote. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign and motion carries. Leaf pickup. Breakout the street. I'm not sure we have to worry about that for a little while. And for future viewers of this video, we have about 10 inches of snow on the ground. We don't see many leaves at this point. Next item, new rate for town bank account. Effective 11/4/25. Do you have anything to add to that?
No, it was 2.46 and now the new rate is 2.48. They just didn't notice, the bank did.
Okay. Attorney contract.
I normally will propose a fairly simple contract every two years. Technically, my current contract is up the, December 31st of this year. This is identical with the exception of it raised my hourly rate about two and a half percent, so it was along the cost of living, so it's up from 210 to 225. That's still substantially less than my normal hourly rate. Part of that is working for the town. Also, part of that is that it's all collectible. So.
So a one-year contract?
This, it should be a two-year. I try not to have us do it every year, but State Morbid Accounts years ago wanted some form of a contract. It's a fairly simple one. It has always allowed either the town or me to terminate for any reason with 30 days' notice. I think that's, I think that's appropriate. I think that you guys would want that. I, even if something would happen, I might exercise that, but I don't anticipate doing that, but that's mainly so that if you were for policy reasons or for whatever reason would want to terminate, we can, you can. Does not, it says for special services might charge at a different rate, not necessarily limited to acting, but including acting as bond counsel. We haven't had a bond here for a long time, so. That would even work, but that's, that's the breakdown. And since we're meeting next week, you don't have to sign it tonight, you don't want to. I'm still on last meeting, last year's contract.
Well, I, for one, think Greg's doing a great job. He has great experience and on top of that, the proposed rate is well within the going rate for this area for municipal council. So I would certainly support.
I make a motion to approve the attorney contract.
One second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the contract as presented. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries.
Renee said she wanted to offer input.
Too late.
Hey, do we need to sign all?
Yeah, just, just a couple of signed copies, one for Renee and one for me. And I've got to exchange for those two. If you guys want blank copies or some reason, it must have, it must have been a special of the copying machine that offered some eight, too many of those.
Did you get a book? I think you did. Oh, no, you didn't.
And those need to be obviously dated yet?
Yep.
Anybody want an unsigned copy for your records? Okay, I believe this is the, is this the last item on the agenda? If we did financial report? Yep, so any concerns regarding property violations, high grass, junk cars or rubbish?
Well, my neighbors across the street now have a stove, a dishwasher, a pile of rotten flooring, a metal desk and a coffee table that the snowplow hit all in front of their house. So I think we need to send them a letter or do something, because they just keep adding to it instead of getting rid of it. It's ridiculous.
What's the address?
214, 213?
I think it's 13, I'm seven, right, it's 8.
Okay, I will send them a letter.
So you and I can, I can look up the address if, if we need to.
Yeah, I know who it is, but
I think we all understand which which property it is. Anything else on that?
No.
Okay, and do you have anything you would like to add, or are you here on that property?
Well, I got lots of complaints about that property. That's not why I'm here.
Oh, okay.
No, I want to, I bought the Dan Brogan property behind my house, that 106 There's a bathroom in that pole barn, and I pay a sewage bill. And the water's been shut off for about a year and a half, and I do have electricity, and I'd like to have that bathroom disconnected, because I don't use it at all. It's nasty, you've already seen it. You know, I just, I just want it dissolved. And that's why I'm here to ask if I can have a cap. I mean, it was a business back here for Dan Brogan, and I, and he did occasionally use it, but.
Is that the second one on that property?
Yeah, there's, the North Shop was Dan's office, but the bathroom was in the big shop on the south pole barn. For whatever reason, I don't.
The property would still be served by sewer, but it would, you would just have one.
Right, my, yeah, because my parking lot's up to it, so it's like a T, so, and I'm 207 West Main Street, obviously, so I just, I just want it disconnected so I don't have to pay the sewage bill. Period.
For that one.
And take the bathroom completely out. Like I said, I have water, but the water's been shut off for a year and a half.
And it's not a residence or anything?
It's just a whole barn.
Okay.
Yeah, no house, not really, yeah. And I don't have any electricity to my North Shop.
Just before we get too much further, could you state your name and address?
Brett Dar, 207 West Main Street, Larwell.
Thank you. What did the ordinance say about capping sewer lines?
I have not looked at it for a long time. I know that we used to, if the property could use a sewer line, we would, I mean, I think we even charged some of these, didn't have any structures on them at one time. Isn't that right, Renee? I would have to review the ordinance to know for sure. That's the nice thing about coming back next week is I can probably check that between now and then. Renee, do you know the answer right off the top of your head?
Well, when we had the, when we had the USD rule, when we had the grant money, no matter if it was empty lot or if it was a no one even lived in it, you still paid your sewage bill because it was based off of how many houses were here and that were connected to it. That's what, that's what the whole loan was based around was that. And so the people have come in in the past and have asked to be taken off of the sewer, you know, because of either like the house is burnt down or for such other reasons, and it's always just been the council that deemed if it was okay or not for them to shut off from the sewer.
What I'd like to do, if it's okay, is to give you a, sort of look at the ordinance and give you a better answer next week.
Okay.
And if that's, I, I don't mean to delay that unnecessarily, Mr. Dar, but I, over the past 30 years, I think that council has had different ways that they have handled that. I think Renee's correct. The last couple, I think they got paid. And so, but I want to make sure that we're not making a larger exception than we need to.
And I did generate, because he had come in earlier and spoke with me, I did generate a form that just says that it has to be capped off, it has to have proof that it's been capped off, just like the ones, the two empty lots that the town owns, those have been capped off, but there has to be proof that it's been capped off. So it has to be done by a licensed plumber, et cetera. So I did, like I said, I made up this form just, just so we had some record of the request and the actions that were taken from it.
Okay, so we'll await your opinion next week?
Thank you.
Anything else for the good of the order? I'm not hearing anything else. We are adjourned.
Did we do financial?
Financial report? No, I didn't.
I know you were feverish, but you probably don't remember. Oh, that you approved the claims and things earlier? Yeah.
I get sent more statements every day right?
Really? I know you do.